In order, in order.
Roll call for the city council meeting of June 15th, 2016 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, I would that we would remember all of those in our community locally and globally that are less fortunate than we are, as well as all those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers, and ask our God and Creator to give us the proper information, the accurate information, so that we can make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any requests for repository sales? Sorry, approve the minutes.
I'm sorry.
I'm jumping the gun.
Approval of minutes from the council meeting of June 1st, 2016, and bills for payment on June 10th, 17th, and 24th, 2016. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Murzky.
Now we'll take any requests for repository sales. Do we have any requests for repository sales?
Mr. President.
Please come forward. If you can go to the microphone, please state your name and address and the property you'd like to purchase.
My name is Kent Moraglio, 663 West Willing Road. The property is 1128 Atkins.
Okay, and tell me a little bit about the property and what you plan to do with it.
It's on the blooded list right now. I plan to renovate it to rent it out.
Okay, any questions from council?
Have you, sir, sorry. Can you pronounce your last name again, please?
Moraglio.
Okay. Have you, have you been in the prop, you haven't been in the property or anything yet, obviously, right?
No.
No. Do you have some history or ability to, again, it's not a facetious question, but we ask these questions because usually these are like lots with no building oftentimes, but when there are buildings on, structures on them, we ask more questions because we want to make sure that the individuals who are going to purchase these has the ability to renovate them and rehab them. We've had bad incidents before, and again, this is no comment on you, but this is why you're being questioned. So we want to just make sure that you have the means, again, without any detail, that you know kind of what you're getting into, because these are the most challenged of challenged properties in our city.
Yes. I just bought a property last year and renovated it and got it successfully rented out.
Okay.
This year I have sufficient funds to do the renovations that I think are needed. You can see in the windows, you get a good idea of the place.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Brennan?
Mr. President, thank you. Is it cosmetic renovations, or is there, you know, like electrical, those are bigger renovations? It's just, you said windows, that type of thing?
Yeah, it's windows, doors, siding, the roof could need some work. It has a newer electrical system on the outside. It has some newer windows, but most of the windows are older generation, single pane that would have to be replaced, and two of the three doors will need to be replaced.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we won't vote on it at this meeting, but we will vote next meeting. Thank you for coming down.
I do have one question.
Yes.
There was a water, well sewer garbage lien against it. Would it be possible to do anything about that? It was pretty substantial, $2,400.
Unfortunately, we don't do the forgiveness on those liens for garbage, so you'd be responsible for that.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other requests for repository sales? Seeing none, we'll continue on with the meeting. Citizens to be heard, Mr. Randy Barnes.
Good evening, Council President Murzky, Council, Administration, guests. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point. Here we are one week later. Many have returned to the scene, the scene of the crime. I wanted to go get some caution tape from the police, but they're kind of running low. They've used up most of their year's budget with it, but happened last Wednesday morning. There were many witnesses. Of course, our solicitor wasn't here as a witness, but either tonight. From all accounts, the perpetrators were male. They were white, and there were four of them. It's believed that they were accomplices, and they've yet to be named. The crime, you ask? Taking away opportunities from children. Those children who are being served or could be served by the Minority Development Opportunity Centers, they were to be to the benefit of Councilwoman Arrington's amendment to the CDBG grant. Let me read from the official docket, from the official record. Those voting against Councilwoman Arrington's amendment to the CDBG grant were Councilmen Zmurzky, Westnarski, Kwiatowski, and Brennan. Councilman Brennan had changed his vote because the council was told they had to have four votes to pass that resolution that was ordinance resolution, was on the agenda last Wednesday. So Councilman Brennan had initially voted for Councilwoman Arrington's amendment to it, but when he was told he had to have four votes, if it wouldn't pass, he changed his vote in order so the city could benefit from the two-plus million dollars. Well, whoever gave him that information wasn't accurate. Councilman Brennan didn't have to change his vote. I don't want to read from the Pennsylvania Legislature's municipal desk book, fourth edition, 2014. If all seven members of the body attend and the vote on a particular issue is three in favor, one against, and three abstentions, the proposal is likewise adopted by the plurality vote. So Councilman Brennan didn't have to change his vote last week. He didn't have to compromise what he believed would be the right thing to do for the community. The unfortunate thing is Councilman Brennan didn't do that on his own. He was told, council was told, they had to have four votes. See, last week, if one council person would change their vote, it went to two-to-two. It would have been a tie, and then there would have had to been some negotiation, some give and take, and possibly these community and development centers that benefit a lot of needy minority immigrants, people that need that help, maybe they could have gotten something. What took place last week may not be a chargeable crime, but it's kind of a crime on humanity, the humanity that lives within the city of Erie, the humanity that needs some additional funding. If we could only affect one child, if we could affect one child with $40,000, that beats a life in the justice system or possibly, just one child. But I think that $40,000 could have helped a lot of children. It could have benefited a lot of children. But it didn't, did it? Because council felt, they read a large report, and somewhere in there, council thought that it said, "Hire some code enforcement officers." I haven't read the whole report, but I've read sections of it. I didn't see where, in the report, it said how many code enforcement officers to hire to fix the problems of the city. I didn't see that. If you've read that and you see the number, let me know, because maybe it's not one. Maybe we need 10 to accomplish what the five can't do today. One-tenth of 1% of the city's budget, that's what they were talking, you were talking about last week, $70,000, one-tenth of 1%. I get more than that on my checking account at the bank, believe it or not. Well, I think that's the end of my talk tonight, because I know you have a lot of things to work on tonight, but it's, I have a feeling we'll be back here at the scene of the crime in a few short weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Next citizen to be heard, Mr. Gary Horton.
We know you'll be back.
We know.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
My name is Gary Horton, 2046 East 19th Street. Councilwoman Arrington, Councilman Jones, Councilman Witherspoon, I was asked by the NAACP and a coalition of other minority urban organizations to thank you for looking out for the interest of Erie's most vulnerable population, although you had to abstain from voting and last week, and we hope that the, what we feel is the administration's attempt to disenfranchise you does not carry over into other areas of interest that we have when we come here for a vote. What we found out at the HUD meeting in Erie on June 8th or June 9th was that you all could have separated those votes and abstained where you had a potential conflict, much like you do on many other votes up here. And also HUD encouraged us. HUD, in fact, confirmed that when the administration's representative in the meeting said, no, we had to vote on, you all had to vote on the whole program that the mayor sent down. Well, the HUD officials disagreed with that. They didn't care how you made the city's plan, as long as it came to them in one plan. They didn't care whether you had separated those issues and voted on them like you do on other, on the other council votes. When citizens, Erie's minority community, NAACP heard that, and they are aware of Kim Green's effort to call these so-called conflicts to the attention of HUD, not, while ignoring the fact that she enriched herself by moving from the economic development job to a job at a redevelopment authority which she funded, which that office funded and oversees, and received a salary that was different from the one she received in that office, moved to redevelopment authority to City Hall, and then went back up to that job, thus taking the salary with her. Erie's minority communities see that as kind of unjust enrichment, and the fact that no one recognizes that but us by a person who raised a conflict over $6,000 to organizations that are on the front line. When you look at the violence and the youth restlessness in our community, how you can vote to spend $24,000 and expect a return? You cannot police your way out of the challenges that we face. There has to be investment or reinvestment back into other organizations that provide useful or organized supervised activity for youth. In the case of the Quality of Life Learning Center, again, we get nothing. The four of you who voted for the mayor's plan, some of you told me last year, next year, and this year you're telling me the same thing, maybe next year. HUD did tell us they're going to take the whole 45 days to review the city's plan, because some of the questions that were raised by the NAACP, they thought deserved a fair look at. And they also told us that they would encourage the mayor to compromise and to work and try to come back with a more inclusive plan. You all can still do that if you would, rather than leave the impression to a significant part of Erie's minority community that there's a black-white thing going here. And that $24,000, $6,000 to the Martin Luther King Center, $6,225, $6,000 to the Booker T. Washington Center, and $12,000 to the JFK, nothing for my organization, and none of these organizations serve to, with any degree of impact, the populations that I serve. And that we still believe the city's citizen participation process was flawed. People believe that the city solicitor played you like a drum, played you like a drum. You need your own attorney, and that we saw that with HUD's position on some of our answers. And as Mr. Randy Barnes just pointed out on that vote, the Office of Economic and Community Development, they played you and the citizens like a fiddle, like a fiddle, as if there's, they don't recognize the problem that we have, this senseless violence that is happening in our community today. And police over time may make some of you safe, it doesn't make us feel any safer. And we feel that if we had meaningful funded activities impacting the lives of the young people that we serve, you could build community trust with the police department that you're seeking, and that, but the, just keep on trying, $500,000 last year, what, $500,000 the year before, while things are getting worse. Even the police chief said, we have to try something new, try something different, and that, and you can't try it without any money. We can't wave a magic wand and think we can provide services for these young people. So I would appeal to you still, and that to the goodness in you, to look at the mayor's plan and to, and to, you know, clear the perception away that there's been somehow a handcuffing of Erie's minority representation, taking away their vote and their voice to speak for us. This five minutes we get, the city solicitor, he leaves. He doesn't even hear what we have to say. Some of you, you don't answer our questions, you just look at us, and that. And then when it comes to a vote, we have to accept you saying, no, 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 that easy. And it's not that easy to us when we watch our young people doing the things that they're doing in our community today. I appeal to you, please.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Horton.
I appeal to you, please, to reinvest in our organizations. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard?
Good evening, Council, Amy Comptore, 913 State Street, apartment 903, 16501. I'm here to talk to you about leadership. I went to the Erie CPR meeting yesterday, Connect Plus Respect, as did Ms. Arrington, and was good to see you there. And I want to tell you, there's a very great grassroots movement coming up in our city. I also had to recently close the Downtown Neighborhood Association. For my own personal medical reasons, I can't do it. My second-in-command had an interesting falling out. He is not fit to do a, to be the head, and he's also moving to North Carolina, he told me, as well, which leaves the organization blank for having somebody to step up with. As far as somebody that will step up, as you know, that's a rarity in our community. See, there's three types of people, as far as I'm, in my opinion, I don't know if it's a humble one or not, but in my opinion, there's three types of people in our city. There's robots, which just do as they're told, or rubber stamp, or however you wish to put it, just follow. There are those that are politicos, which will only follow as the politics are concerned. And then there are the advocates, who will, in spite of rubber stamping and in spite of politics, do what's best for the community. And it's hard to be an advocate in this city without getting burned. I got burned by my, by my own landlords because of the advocacy that I am engaged in. And I knew I took that risk when I started this organization. When I started Downtown Neighborhood Association, I knew there would be businesses that would, you know, not be so hot on the ideas of trying to calm the open container law from all year round to just special events. Some of them are even my best friends. God bless them. But you know what? There's no reason to have public intoxication in our city 24/7, 365 days a year, with the epidemics that we have in this city, with, within our city boundaries, about five-by-seven blocks worth, we have about five or six centers committed to drug and alcohol and community corrections. What does that say? And then the prison within mid-city area. We have such a level of violence in our community that PNC on 9th and State actually came to me, was saddened that I was closing out the business account for Downtown Neighborhood Association, and said, my God, they won't support you, you're not even a business. Altair had said to me, you know what? You're not a commercial, you're not a commercial business, so, and you're not a commercial client. You're a resident, and you can't have a business inside your residence. Well, I'll tell you, many, many of a small business, many of an organization, we were a 501(c)(4), okay? And yes, we were going to try to work up to 501(c)(3), but as many of you know, it takes time, and it takes a lot of money, and it takes a lot of good works. Now, we were doing a lot of good works, and I'll tell you something, we must have been doing a bang-up darn good job in order in five months, that's a really young organization. In five months, I guess we were considered a threat of doing good for the community so much that they wanted to squash us. You know, for my own sake, I have to consider a medical welfare for my own sake and a transfer to Pittsburgh eventually. And I'm looking about August roughly for that, August or September. And it breaks my heart. It breaks my heart to see this city in the condition that it's in, and leadership and rubber stamping. Folks, you've got a great grassroots base here of people that want change. But if the mayor, that we only see three months out of the year, and that's only when we have things like Roar on the Shore, maybe the Rib Fest, and Erie Days, pardon me for saying it, I know teachers at work more than that. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to recess the meeting, and everyone who is a citizen to be heard, you stay put, because we're going to reconvene after we have our public hearing. But it is 8 o'clock, so at this time, we're going to start with our public hearing on the city comprehensive plan and community decision-making guide, Erie Refocused. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're going to call this public hearing to order, and first, we will have Ms. Allison Smith from Economic Development to talk about the process of Erie Refocused.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to explain the process, and also thank you for your attention when we did the study session with council in early June about the plan. I'm relatively new to this position, and believe me, in reading about the process, I was pretty impressed with all that went through within the last year. Erie Refocused is a comprehensive plan and community decision-making guide. Back in February of 2015, the city contracted with CZB Consultants, which is Charles Bukie's organization, to do a study on Erie and what it is we can do. There was a 32-member steering committee consisting of county, city, nonprofits, business, educational, and health representatives. There's support from various groups already within the city, and one of the things that I find pretty interesting is someone that comes from the state side of the world, is this particular plan is starting to coincide with a couple of the other things that are going on in Erie. It's coinciding with the Erie Downtown Master Plan, with what's happening with Emerge 2040, and they're all coming together at a good time. It just seems like the stars are aligned, and everyone's starting to get on the same page about really trying to reinvest in Erie. We had four large public meetings, approximately 15 focus group meetings throughout the year to do that, and there are 17 different planning areas within the neighborhoods, and I would like the public and council, of course, to know that in our department, we've discussed taking us going to the various 17 areas and talking to those in the neighborhoods to see what it is they see in their neighborhood. It's not for us to tell them what their neighborhood needs. With a cautionary word, that sometimes when you see people from a government agency coming, it means, oh, good, they're bringing the checkbook. We're not bringing the checkbook yet, but we need to see what they might have, and again, with my past history with the state, maybe I can do some help with capacity building in those neighborhoods. You know, we already have some capacity on the east side with, on the Bayfront East Side Task Force. The west side is starting to go strong now with their west bayfront. We have the Little Italy, the Sisters of St. Joseph, we've talked about that, and we have a group over in Snoops. And in combination with the NRO, I'm certainly hoping that we'll be able to help some other organizations and neighborhoods look to see where maybe we can come into play and help them. One of the big things that came out of the plan is that there's an imbalance of housing stock due to the declining population in Erie, and that's a real concern of ours, because a lot of the housing stock that's out there is either not livable, and it's just standing there, or it's definitely not safe for the children and the elderly people especially. So that's about what we, let's see what else I do. That's about it, as far as the presentation, and then I, the plan went to the Planning Commission, so they'll have something to say about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this point, we will call up the Planning Commission for their recommendation, and Mr. Matthew Puz, and Mr. Jake Welsh.
Good evening, President Murzky, esteemed members of council. My name's Matthew Puz. I am the Erie City zoning officer and secretary to the Planning Commission, and I'm here to read the recommendation for the Planning Commission. The city, excuse me, the City of Erie Planning Commission, at its regular meeting on April 19th, 2016, reviewed and made recommendations for the proposed Erie City Comprehensive Plan. Pursuant to Section 302(a) of Act 247 in 1968 as amended the Pennsylvania Municipalities' Planning Code, the planning agency held one public meeting before forwarding the proposed comprehensive plan to the governing body. Following discussion and input from the public, the Planning Commission voted 4 to 0 to forward the comprehensive plan to city council with the recommendation that the plan be adopted. The Planning Commission also recommended that an implementation plan for the comprehensive plan be created and managed by the Erie City Department of Community and Economic Development. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Puz?
Mr. President.
Mr. Witherspoon.
I attended the, I guess, one of the first meetings at Jefferson School, and the plan when presented indicated that the downtown area is the key area that we should focus on and then spread out. And I had disagreed with that and voiced my opinion that none of the neighborhoods were included in revitalization. Everything is downtown. Then I was told downtown is from 14th to the Bay, and I guess from SAS over to Parade. And then I go to another meeting, they tell me downtown is 18th Street and over the East Avenue, so I'm not sure where downtown is. So my main concern is we aren't putting enough money into the neighborhoods. We can beautify downtown, but if the neighborhoods aren't worked on and upgraded, revitalized, then what happens to the downtown when the neighborhood people come downtown? And one other question that transpired at that meeting, would it be a gated community? And that took, that was quite a bit of discussion. So I don't know if any part of it's going to be gated, because there are going to be some condos down there. Are folks out of the community, it's total community, I'm not just talking about my community, total community, would they be able to walk freely, spend time, or would it be a timeframe? Because we put- it be a timeframe because we're putting so much money down there? Those are the questions that I had that were never answered. Was those questions questioned, discussed in any of the meetings?
Not at the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Any other council people which do speak? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will call up anyone who is in favor of the plan to speak. Anyone who is in favor of the plan?
What's the time limit? Is it three minutes or five?
There is a time limit.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street. Need anything else? No. I am in favor generally of the plan. I am concerned that it be properly and carefully interpreted and implemented. Mr. Puzz mentioned that there should be an implementation plan. I think it's essential that that implementation plan include adequate public involvement, public notification. It was quite a while before this plan was available for people to read it. But my experience has been in places where, when there was a development going in, there was a sign up, and you knew that you had an opportunity to comment on it. I've never seen that once in Erie. A lot has been talked about, about how we make Erie a great, so I'm going to comment about, yes, I support the plan, but I think there are some things that we need to be particularly aware of or cautious about. We should have a great city. We should have a city that is friendly to pedestrians. We should have a city that attracts families and professional people to move into the city rather than flee with their tax dollars to this Mill Creek and other townships. Well, we don't have any restrooms in the millions of dollars that we spent on Perry Square. We have very few restrooms available for people who want to enjoy and walk on the bayfront. Believe me, I know, I was there today, and I can tell you, you can go for a long time, and there's no restrooms. A good city, a great city, and apparently, commonly in Italy, there are public restrooms. I remember the great celebration that occurred in La Conner, Washington, when the public restroom was built and, and opened. I think it's very important that we have public restrooms. And yes, people could do things in them that we don't like, but if they're maintained, they'll be, they'll be clean. I've never come across a nasty, dirty restroom on Presque Isle. And I've been there like Monday of a four-day weekend, and I've never come across a nasty restroom on Presque Isle. Much is, is mentioned in this plan about greening in parks and good landscapes and lawn maintenance. I want to point out to you the wonderful article written by Katie Kreist in, in the Erie Reader, and how crazy we are in this culture and in Erie for lawns. I think it's important when we look at what is good landscaping, and what do we want to foster and encourage as we go forward with this plan. It may not just be lawns. We're going to be sorry that we end up with very, a very non-diverse ecosystem because of our fascination with lawns and exotic plants. So, and a good example of a lost opportunity is the new park created at Sixth and Holland by Erie Insurance that's basically all lawn. It's too bad. We should never, ever miss an opportunity in the approval of some kind of development plan, and here I talk to the zoning commission for this and the planning commission, never miss an opportunity to, to require the construction of new sidewalks. We have missed many opportunities, and especially, I can point out, on Green Garden, where we should have had a sidewalk constructed, and, and I will not rest until I see one there. But this is an example that we should not do that. In the demolition process, we should not make mistakes. We should not, we should be very careful that we don't just go demolishing things to remove blight, and then later say, "Oh, that was an awful nice building that we tore down. That was a good example of X, Y, and Z." I think there needs to be, as I mentioned, better public notification and involvement in process. In the idea of decentralizing or moving out of downtown human services, we need to be very cautious that we don't create a situation where we're making it more difficult for people to access the services they need because they're spread all over the place, and they have to take multiple lift trips or multiple bus rides in order to get to where they need to go, and that should be carefully considered. I think it's important that if people are able to acquire property because they mowed the lawn for five years, that there be adequate controls on them. This is mentioned in the plan. I'd hate to see somebody acquire properties and turn it into more parking, more pavement, more lawn. To, to buy a house at auction and take the facade and make it something that's totally out of character with the neighborhood. Like many great cities, Erie should have a city bicycle pedestrian committee. They should have a committee that is a regularly constituted committee that is involved in furthering those projects, not, not a nonprofit group, but a city committee. One of the things that really kind of bothers me about the design of Perry Square, besides the prison-like structure of reviewing stand, is there's just an unfriendliness about the placement of the seating. Hopefully, if we're going to design more parks, these six parks that Boogie talks about in, on the east bayfront and some of those other neighborhoods, that we, we look at how we place seating, and that we make it more inviting, more friendly. I think this is a, a great opportunity for Erie to be that great city, to have a great future, but I think we need to be cautious, and I need to, that we need to be careful how we say we are or aren't doing projects in conformance with the plan. Because when I was here with the first hearings about the HUD grants, and I heard people say, "The plan would say this, and the plan would say that," everybody says the plan says what they want done. That's why an implementation committee, an implementation plan, and one that allows public involvement is, is critical. Thank you so much for your time, and, and I wish us all good luck in implementing this plan.
Adam Trot, 531 West Sixth Street. Frankly, I don't know how you could not like this plan. Some of the goals that he states on page 29, get property owners to reinvest, upgrade real estate values, strengthen infrastructure, more socioeconomic balance, increase young adults' interest in the city. Who can't agree with that? Reading through the plan, there's practically nothing I disagree with. The real trick in this whole plan is implementation. There needs to be honest discussion, dialogue, and debate about what the plan elements mean. For example, if you balance what's in the plan with the letter of transmittal that was in the Erie Reader, you realize a lot of things that Erie just keeps doing wrong, that we have to stop doing wrong. Selling assets short, adherence to an ineffective status quo, risk aversion. Boy, if there's a city that has major risk aversion, it's Erie. Mistaking cheap for frugal. As an architect, I see this continually. Clients want to do a certain project, they don't have the money, and they think if they can get it in at the cheapest deal, that they can pat themselves on the back, but what they've done is they've devalued the area of that project. So mistaking cheap for frugal is a very prominent one in Erie. Not engaging citizens. We need a real substantive engagement, not just a token two-hour, open comment series of, of meetings, one or two per plan. No, you really have to get into the people and get their reaction. That's not to say the people know 100% what to do, but they certainly inform the process so that when we make the decisions at this level, we understand better how that impacts the people on the street. So that's, that's very important. Not working together and lack of trust, also in the letter of transmittal, that is so prevalent near you, and we all see it day in and day out. We need to overcome that, we need to all be Erieites, and that is part of lack of confidence in one another. That's prevalent near you again. I think we can get past that if we can accept a confident dialogue process, where you come to the table with what you're thinking, what your ideas are, and much like the risk aversion problem, you don't get scared about putting your opinion on the table. That's what dialogue's all about. There is no bad idea because you have to vet this stuff. So I think if we can establish an atmosphere and a forum for that kind of open discussion about what's best for Erie, you'll find that, that level of distrust melt, because people will feel like, "Well, I might not like what he says, but at least he's candid, and we know what we're dealing with." What would that mean for structural changes here in City Hall? Reasserting Erie's pedestrian scale, we have to forget about the automobile, and, and Boogie says this, when you have people making decisions about the city who don't live in the city, their opinion of the city is, "It takes me time to get from point A to point B, so how can I quicken that so I can get back home in the suburbs and make dinner time?" They don't at all think about the street, the pedestrian scale, and life on the street in Erie. They just want to fly down the street to get to where they want to get to. That's why you have a lot of what we live with today. It's very self-evident. So we have to put ourselves in the position of living in the city. What's a day in the life like living in the city? You know, a lot of people are economically challenged in the city, and like, like Freda pointed out, being in the city should benefit them because they don't have to spend so much to get to where they need to get to, except when you no longer have a grocery store, when the streets aren't welcoming anymore, and you want to look for calling that taxi or calling your aunt or your brother to give you a lift because you don't feel comfortable walking down anymore. Those kinds of things, we've lost what the value of the city is, so we need to get that back. We need, by, by all means, we absolutely need a city planner in City Hall. There is nobody in City Hall with that skill set. And the reason why we have an Erie Downtown Partnership Plan, a City Comprehensive Plan, an R-West Bayfront Plan, a BEST Task Force Plan, you have all these plans because there's no one maestro orchestrating all these efforts so they synchronize with one another. Tonya, forget the code official, get a city planner. You'll find that all of a sudden, all these objectives will continually be synchronized to one another, and projects in the city will start to move in a linear forward way for the city, rather than these fragmented pieces that are unrelated. Another thing that's desperately needed, the people want a strong city council. And those of us that have formed Erie CPR, we have a strong calling to empower you because you are our representatives, you are our voice here in City Hall. You need your own solicitor. You have no muscle when things that come in conflict with what you'd like to do, you have no muscle to push back. You absolutely have to have your own city solicitor. That's the only way you're going to become, again, a proper check and balance to administration. I'm not saying administration means harm to the city. I'm saying administration doesn't know what they don't know. Where I do hold them accountable is they don't care to know what they don't know. When they don't know something, they just attack the opposition. They don't have that open, trustful dialogue of putting on the table, "This is what I think's what's best, what do you think what's best?" They don't want to hear it. So what they do is they attack when you challenge it, and that's a killer for the city. That's what's disenfranchised so many people. When you're elected, people are so excited, and everybody on council has their own projects that benefit the city that are exemplary. I could just read off a long list. Every one of you are doing things to make the city better, but when you come together as a collective voice, and you don't hold your ground, now all of a sudden, your value's greatly diminished. So please, in the next budget, get a city solicitor, a city council solicitor in there. You really need it. And finally, I want to just say that I was very impressed. I think the city did a fantastic job hiring Charles Boogie. I commend him for being a person of character, that he, he has a work product of integrity. To him, it was important to give you his best work, whether you liked it or not, and that's what he did. And I think the guy is very smart. His existing conditions assessment is a fantastic baseline for us to move forward with. And now the trick is, let's implement openly. Don't let little ideas in a back office captain the ship here. It's a community plan, and there is no dumb idea. They can all be brought because they, they have a seed from somewhere, but without that open, honest, transparent discussion, we will never really have a truly inclusive process that's going to refranchise so much of the city that feels like they're, they're on the outside of the fence. So please, as we go forward, strongly think about that, and, and let's pull Erie together as one community again. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Councilman and woman. I am Barbara Chafee. I represent the Erie Regional Chamber and Growth Partnership, 208 East Bayfront Parkway, Erie, Pennsylvania. First, I spoke with the study session, but I want to reiterate that we believe the implementation of this city com-plan is critical for economic development and tax revenue for the city and county. I was fortunate enough to serve on the steering committee and go through this entire process, and though challenging at many times, I think it was well worth the effort. It is critical to begin the eradication of blight in our neighborhoods, to eliminate our slum lords, our drug dens, abandoned homes, and to build healthy neighborhoods so that families have a safe, healthy environment to enhance their lives. The decline of our neighborhood and our gateways into the city result in disinvestment by existing business and industry, and they are less inclined to expand and invest. It is also a tremendous roadblock for us in attraction of business and industry. With a high percentage of nonprofits in the city of Erie, we must make every effort to grow existing business and to attract new business, not only for our tax revenue base, but for job opportunities as well. And if our current businesses and new businesses cannot grow and expand, if they are not thriving, they cannot donate to the many nonprofits that are in the region, and many of those nonprofits are taking leadership roles in the revitalization of our neighborhoods. The erosion of the city tax base adds to our extreme challenges, of course, of the Erie School District. Blighted and declining neighborhoods and a school district in crisis is another roadblock to attraction and expansion, and of course, to purchasing homes within the city. We must use every tool in our arsenal to rid the city of blight: code enforcement, land bank, and a housing court. The environment in which our children are raised does make a difference. It is said in the study that due to blight, it is estimated that $96 million is withheld every year from housing and home improvement expenditures. That not only contributes to a growing blight problem, it equates to lost jobs and lost expenditures in Erie businesses that are in the housing and home improvement sector. Never before have we had such synergy, Emerge 2040, the Erie City Comprehensive Plan, and the Downtown Master Plan, three plans in concert with each other and complementary neighborhood plans that are completed or in development. Another point of the plan which is critical, that those who live in the neighborhoods should be able to plan their vision, have input to their neighborhood. should be able to plan their vision, have input to their neighborhoods in which they reside, which we think is critically important. So you are standing at a fork in the road. You have some tough decisions. If you decide to move forward, which we hope you will, we know there's going to be some real rough spots. They won't just be potholes, sometimes they'll be sinkholes, but you will leave a lasting legacy for this city. And so to quote John F. Kennedy, "Change is law of life, and those who look only to the past or present are certain to miss the future." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is John Ganderud. I'm a downtown Erie resident and condo owner. I live in the Mercantile Building. I'm also a lawyer with Northwestern Legal Services. I walk to work in the downtown area and around the downtown area for relaxation and exercise, so I'm very familiar with what it's like to be a pedestrian in the downtown area. I want to first make a comment to a comment that Councilman Witherspoon made about the idea of implementing the Erie Refocus Plan would mean excluding marginalized people. That's the way I took what he said. And I just want to let you know that I am a residential owner in downtown area, and I would be adamantly opposed to any such idea that the only way we can improve downtown is to exclude people from the downtown area. I came to City Council to make comments when the bus route was moved off of State Street in strong opposition to that because I felt that that was an exclusionary policy and was bad for the city of Erie. So I just wanted to make that comment. I urge council to approve the Erie Refocus Plan. I want to just focus for a minute or two on some comments Charles Boogie made regarding what he called "consideration of Erie's pedestrian scale" when developing and implementing transportation projects. Nonmotor vehicle forms of transportation must have a real seat at the table in the development and implementation of future transportation initiatives in the city: pedestrian, bicycle, and public transit. They do it in Pittsburgh, they do it in Minneapolis, they do it in Portland. I've been in all those cities. I've been in Berlin, Germany, where my oldest son lives. It's amazing. We can do it in Erie. We can be a leader. You want to attract growing businesses that employ smart, active, young people to Erie and keep homegrown young people here with good employment opportunities? You better give them well-built out and safe forms of transportation in addition to the automobile. We can do this. For example, Erie is flat, unlike Pittsburgh, and has many wide streets which can easily accommodate dedicated bicycle lanes. Erie has a large percentage of low-income residents, as we all know. Cars are expensive to buy and maintain. Strong bicycle, pedestrian, and public transit options will significantly improve the day-to-day lives of our low-income neighbors by giving them more disposable income and options as a result. Erie often rates low on indices of physical and mental health. Walking and biking can help counter those depressing realities. And finally, walking, biking, and public transit bring people in closer contact with their neighbors and neighborhoods, and I believe over time will promote, accelerate the development of local businesses. Thank you.
My name is Anna Franz. I'm the Executive Director of Emerge 2040. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you all about Erie Refocused. I should also note that I served on the Technical Advisory Committee, and there are several members of that group in the audience this evening. So Emerge 2040, as you know, is the steward of the Erie Region's plan for sustainability, and it's guided by a steering committee that consists of leaders from the nonprofit, government, and business sectors. Emerge 2040 represents all of Erie County, and though steering committee members come with different perspectives on our region's needs because they live all throughout Erie County, they work all throughout Erie County, together, the group felt that it was important to come out in strong support of Erie Refocused. The committee recognizes that the strength of the city is critical to our region's future. Whether we live, work, or play in the city of Erie, whether we're concerned about job opportunities, sprawling development that eats into Erie County's natural lands, or creating healthy and safe homes for Erie families, Erie Refocused is part of the solution. As we discussed in our letter of support, there are several specific ways in which Erie Refocused aligns with Destination Erie and lays out strategies that will require implementation at the municipal level. And I won't go into all of them now, but broadly speaking, reinvesting in Erie's existing communities and creating neighborhood-level strategies based on community input to prioritize investments are at the heart of both the regional plan, Destination Erie, and in the heart of Erie Refocused. Beyond the specific points of alignment, we have to recognize, as Ms. Chafee pointed out, that this is a critical opportunity in Erie's history. With Destination Erie as the plan for the region's future, along with Erie Refocused, the strategy for what many would say is our most significant, our most important community, we have a truly unique opportunity to direct the region's future toward stability and strength. Together, these plans are the basis for that future, and having them both in place opens the door to new ways of thinking about how we get there. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Brown-System. I'm Chair of the Emerge 2040 Steering Committee. I also am Executive Director at Erie Arts and Culture. And while I do not live in the city, I was born in the city, I was raised in the city, I went to school at the Erie's Public Schools, I bought my first home back in the city in 2001 when I moved back to the state. But I also moved based on some of the concerns that you see and that were drawn attention to in the plan. I travel every day into the city. I work here. My office is on West 10th Street. We just moved into a historic building and gave it new life. I'm an advocate of this city, and I don't, when I tell people where I'm from, I don't tell them Mill Creek. I tell them Erie. So I want to make sure that as we think about implementation, that we are sure to include community leaders, business leaders, and residents of surrounding areas that understand that if there is no Erie, there are no suburbs, and our rural areas will suffer. I'm here to ask for your adoption of the Erie Refocused Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan is realistic, and it is direct. And if you haven't read it all yet, while it is lengthy, it is critical. It's a bold roadmap, let's not be fooled, for how actions and resources can be prioritized and employed in a strategic manner to create progress. Helping to implement a regional plan, I can tell you, because I'm working very hard with a great group of people on Emerge 2040, the plan that you have in front of you with Refocus Erie or Erie Refocus is not the final product. It will evolve through implementation, further community engagement, which has been called for repeatedly now and is warranted. But it needs to be, the public needs to be informing specific actions of the plan, and to do so, they need your leadership. The Emerge 2040 Steering Committee is interested in working together to help engage residents to inform, understand, and take ownership over their role in implementing all community plans, and we have a lot on the table right now. The fact that some people are in the audience and want access to a paper copy, I think that's a great sign of how concerned our citizens are and how engaged they want to be. It means that they care about this city, and they want to be a part of the process to change it. But again, your leadership is needed. The tool, the plan is a tool for you. It's a tool for the mayor, for city departments, and for candidates considering running for any position in local government. It's a tool that can unite and direct our actions, and through adoption, you have the opportunity to make this the city's platform. You set the stage for the actions that you will steward and the actions of those who will lead next. The plan is a resource that can be used to help articulate the city's priorities to county and state officials. It's a sign to ourselves and to others that Erie is empowering itself to create a more competitive, attractive, and welcoming place to live, work, and visit. Adoption of the Comprehensive Plan is a critical early step in the process. In adoption, you confirm that we, the city, are on a path for reemergence, that our residents, businesses, and community leaders, and potential supporters of implementation, they need to see you take this important step. So tonight I ask you to be realistic, to be direct, and to be bold, and to adopt the Comprehensive Plan, because our people, our city, and our region are ready to refocus. Thank you.
My name is Catherine Rosdick. I live at 527 Seminole Drive. So I'm a city of Erie resident, but I also had the pleasure of working very closely with the Steering Committee and the Advisory Committee on Development of the Comprehensive Plan as Director of Planning for Erie County. I have been in the city for just over a year now. It was a difficult decision, when my family moved here, to reside inside city limits. I can tell you, I understood the challenges that the city was facing. I've seen it elsewhere in other places that I've lived. Blight, disinvestment, true disinvestment in the city puts a lot of pressure on those who choose to make calls the city of Erie their home. I saw the school system in decline, but I wanted an opportunity for my son to live and grow in a city that is primarily much more walkable than the suburbs. I wanted him to have access to some beautiful parks and neighborhoods, and I also wanted him to have access to Collegiate Academy, which I hope will still be open in the next few years. It was a difficult decision. It was a decision that the city didn't sell to me. It was one that I discovered on my own, that the city was and could be a great place to live. Then I had the great opportunity then to work with the city staff and Charles Boogie and the Steering Committee and the Advisory Committee on Development of this plan. I can tell you, I have been a professional planner for, I have to say, over 20 years. That number keeps growing every time I say that, and it makes me cringe. I have worked on city comprehensive plans, township master plans, regional plans, in four different states, a number I can't, 15 or 20 at least. And I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt that this is one of the best comprehensive plans I have ever seen. It is focused, it is achievable, and it makes tremendous sense. Your downtown is your heart. Without your heart, the extremities will not survive. That you start with the downtown as your primary objective, that you build and strengthen the neighborhoods around your downtown, that is achievable. What's not achievable is development of a comprehensive plan that is so broad and spreads your resources that you all know are so limited, so thinly that you have zero impact. You turn it from a proactive decision-making body into a reactive decision-making city. That's unfortunately the state that you're in today. If you adopt the plan that you have before you, it is achievable. The number to fix the city is pretty high, between $300 and $600 million. But how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. So the first bite that you need to take is to adopt this plan. That is the easiest part of your job. From now on, after you adopt this plan, it becomes much more difficult. You will be held accountable for every decision that you make, that this decision be in alignment with this plan, as it should be. You will hold the staff of the city accountable for every decision that they make, that it also be in alignment with this plan. You should also hold the entities that create a city, the nonprofits, the neighborhood organizations, the for-profit sector, you should also hold them accountable for implementation of this plan, because you cannot do it alone. And from this day forward, once you adopt the plan, it no longer becomes the Boogie Plan, it becomes the city of Erie's Comprehensive Plan and the roadmap for change and for progress and for moving forward. And I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Austin, 1262 West 9th. I want to thank all of you on City Council for your role in bringing Charles Boogie to Erie. It's an amazing thing that he came here, and this plan is pretty amazing. It's very exciting. I wanted to point out one thing that Dr. Mindy Thompson Fulllove pointed out to me when she looked through the plan when she came, and she noted the map that shows the relative land values or real estate values throughout the city is almost a mirror image of a 1930 redlining map that was used to isolate and to encourage disinvestment. And so my point is that the areas that are red and are less, the values are so low, that's actually a generations of disinvestment that was deliberate in many ways. So it's something just to consider as you move forward. I noted that the ideas that Ms. Chafee was mentioning in terms of dealing with the blight, they are important ones, but they focus on the idea of enforcement. And I think that another way to consider this is to look at models of encouraging the residents or encouraging adoption of properties. Dr. Anjanette Jackson has done something like that on the east side. She bought a property that was, she really even couldn't get a bank loan on it because it was in such poor condition, and she's been able to transform it into not only a livable place, but a beautiful home. And so if we could encourage more citizens to come forward and guide them in that. I also want to say that I think it's really crucial, as you adopt this plan, and I hope you will, that we move forward with more community involvement. I think that transparency and the dialogue and the decision-making is crucial. I think that we have had a recent history with closing of Division Street, the buses off of State, and the proposal to tear down the Viaduct. These things were not vetted appropriately with community involvement. And so I think that as you form an implementation team, I would encourage you, as Adam Trott did moments ago, to find a way to get a city planner. You need somebody of, for instance, Kathy Rosdick's skill level, to guide us as we move forward. And lastly, I do want to echo again what Adam Trott said about the importance of your council having its own attorney. Randy Barnes brought a document here, which I'll just briefly read. It's the Pennsylvania Legislators Municipal Deaths Book. It's the fourth edition, 2014. And it specifically states, "And if all seven members of the body attend, and the vote on a particular issue is three in favor, one against, and three abstentions, the proposal is likewise adopted by the plurality," I can't even say it today, "by the vote." So the point I guess I'm making is that it wasn't necessary to have all four members voting in support of that funding. So it wouldn't have changed the outcome. My point is that I think it's important to have your own attorney to have counsel with. Thank you for your time tonight.
Hi, good evening, Council. My name is Joel Natali. I'm at 214 East 34th Street. I'm in the Mercyhurst planning area, according to the Comprehensive Plan. I'm here just for a couple moments to congratulate you and our city's leaders for engaging in this planning process and for your willingness to do the hard work to make our city, and in turn, our region, a better place to live and raise our families. However, our city has found itself past a tipping point, and we are losing hope. For my entire lifetime, and that's except for five years in my twenties, I've lived in the city of Erie, and over those 53 years, our city has been in decline. There has not been a period in the last half-century where Erie has experienced growth. That's despite the seemingly magical capabilities of securing federal funds by the late Mayor Nuteulio. That's despite $1 billion of state investment between the administrations of Governors Ridge and Rendell. It's time that our city's citizens aggressively take on the task of turning this flagship around, using our ingenuity and our entrepreneurial spirit. We can do it, but it's important that we know that our elected leaders will share that tenacity and that focus. So I encourage you, as I support this Comprehensive Plan, that you use it as a playbook, that you stay focused on achieving the incremental wins, as prescribed in the plan, to strengthen those core neighborhoods of West and East Bayfront. Please don't be swayed by some mistaken concept of fairness and water down the impact of the limited the limited resources we have for improving our focus areas. We have to build on our strengths, the strengths of what Gannon is doing, and what Erie Insurance is doing, what Hammond is doing. And as we see successes, we'll realize a greater fairness, as we all enjoy an improved quality of life, property values, and job attraction for our whole city and region. Thanks for your leadership and for this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm back again. Amy Compritor, 913 State Street, Apartment 903, Erie 16501. I have mixed feelings about this plan, but in general, I support it. I do think there are a lot of things we must also take into reconsideration as we have this, but the general idea of this plan is an excellent one, and ought to be very well noted with those who designed it and who thought of this complete design, especially in connections with the bayfront to downtown, and including the West 12 corridors going east and west as a heart of the core, of regional core of our city. This is the first time I have seen the bayfront, the downtown, and 12th Street, east and west, all comprehensive into one, and it definitely says that somebody from downtown actually helped in the design of this, knowing that those areas are vital to the downtown and its community. What scares me about this plan, and ought to be taken into consideration, as I look at it on pages 52 and 53 of this plan, is East 5th Street and 10th Street in general, east and west. And it says here to stimulate mixed-use redevelopment at focus nodes along State Streets, starting with blocks adjacent to 5th and 10th. As we all know, 5th and 10th are very highly, high crime areas at this point, and 10th is getting better, fortunately. Downtown Neighborhood Association had had a hand in that, God love it. 5th is doing very poorly at this point. I think what we need to take in consideration, that has not been discussed in this plan, that is a very valuable note, is that in all of downtown, especially at those two nodes, you have Richard Arms, you have Palace Apartments. In between there, you've also got Mid-City Towers. And from this plan, it says to want to initiate a high-quality, complete street makeover of downtown streets, starting with State Street. I've always wanted that makeover, so to speak. I wish that, and anybody, as someone noted earlier, Pittsburgh has very wide streets. In fact, they put ours to shame. They also have bicycle lanes in theirs, which would be a great consideration for us if Erie drivers actually wouldn't bother to run over pedestrians in crosswalks, you know. First of all, and I had an EMTA bus, two of them actually break a, I had the red hand with the 20. I had called Megan Cousins over this the other day, and they broke since I had the 20 in the countdown, you know, I had the right-of-way still to cross. Buses ignored that. I don't understand how we're going to implement effective bicycle structuring, which puts people at a more vulnerable state into the lanes. We would also have to take over some of the properties that belong to the ownership. You're talking about widening State Street, which I have always wanted to see done. However, you must take in consideration all those properties that have the people in them right now as residential units, because you will have to take down not only the residential units, but the commercial businesses on the other sides as well, on both sides. You're talking about invading Boston Store. You're talking about invading McDonald's. You're talking about invading even UPM C-Hammett, okay, in order to widen it, and you would need the permission of all of those properties in order to widen it. I don't think that was taken in consideration here. It's a much more complex plan than the plan alludes to. Also, there's about the benign relocation of human service functions to areas beyond the Central Business District. I've said that for years now, you know, but then that also is about having those other places which will be relocated to being on the same page as us. And quite frankly, I feel that it's been a not-in-my-backyard issue with many people, that they don't want the hands of, say, Medicaid, or they don't want, you know, the MHA affiliate we could put out in, say, Wesleyville, or wherever else, or, you know, Central City, or down near Green Garden, or wherever, okay? We have to have people on the same page. We just can't uproot them and say, you're going, you know, when this plan's implemented, I mean, I love the idea of some of these things in this plan, but I don't think that we've really considered the depth of this, you know? You talk about highly distressed areas, especially with East Bayfront, Trinity Park, downtown, east and west bayfront. This is about neglect. If the city were a child, okay, we would consider this to be an abusive home and try and pull the child right out of it, okay? And our city, we have neglected the buildings. You want to put in streetscapes and landscapes, you know, along the bayfront. Beautiful. You've already been doing that for years, guys. How about remodeling the neighborhood? How about, instead of people like, I've picked on them already, people like Tom Kennedy, Scott Development, instead of putting money into building structures that are designed for a higher class, that we don't have coming into the downtown? How about remodeling these places that are already in structure to meet ADA specifications? I know of three places off the top of my head in this area that do not have ADA-accessible elevators, that have elevators that break down constantly and put people in jeopardy, okay? What about rebuilding? And some of these people are working on the bayfront as we speak, but yet they don't want to work on these buildings that are in so desperate need? We become a city of what we want to pick and choose. It's a beautiful plan. I mean, it's a great idea, working on blight, you know, but do you really have the support behind us? The state of the city? When I look at this thing, I don't know whether to laugh or cry. The county of Erie, 280,000, over 280,000 people, and growing in 110 years, outside of the city, at over 178,000 in 110 years. Nothing but pure growth on those two. And the City of Erie declining since 1960, at over now 100,000, 101,000. We've been in decline for almost 60 years soon. This is not working. We need to do something about this. You know, it's great to have a plan, but I really think that with all this, you need to take in consideration the people. As to whether I stand positive or negative against this plan, I'm not quite sure. I love the general idea, however, there really needs to be more cooperation on this, and I don't think you've taken the effective measures to notify all the planning people, to notify all the residents, and to have everything come full circle.
My name is Ben Pratt. I live at 929 West 4th Streets. I have lived in the city collectively, but not all concurrently, over eight years. I own my house and have participated in both the regional planning effort of Destination Erie, the city comprehensive planning effort as a member of the Advisory Board. I am a member of the Advisory Board and Steering Committee of our west bayfront. As a resident and an active participant in all of these public forums, and all of the different town hall meetings consistent with these processes and planning efforts, it is my opinion that this plan not only reflects the best intentions of myself and my neighbors, but also it is my recommendation that City Council adopt the plan with the intention of the development of an implementation strategy contingent on the, working with the private sector to develop a public-private nonprofit effort. Thank you.
No, once, yeah, once you're down, you're down, I'm just standing in as Vice Chair, but he's back, so never mind.
I was just asking.
I don't think the answer's going to change, though.
Gary Horton, 2046, East 19th Street. We are indeed at a defining moment in our history. Our community is more diverse today than ever. I rise to support and encourage you to adopt this comprehensive plan. I also concur with many of the comments that have been articulated here this evening. I'm a product of and a citizen affected by the Liberty-Sassafras Renewal Project back in the 1960s, and its impact on the demise of downtown Erie. I do believe fairness is important. I know what it feels like to be overlooked and excluded. I see an energy unfolding or growing in our community around this initiative and others. The status quo is unsustainable. I met Mr. Bukey and participated in a couple of the forums. I certainly respect the product that he came up with, and I would encourage Erie City Council, who reflects somewhat the diversity in our community, and can ensure the fact that there is a growing opportunity for citizen participation to perfect the implementation of this plan, I encourage you to support it. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in support of the plan? Seeing none, anyone to speak in opposition to the plan? Anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing none, does Council, anyone want to make a comment?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
I, on the surface, very, actually very supportive, not just on the surface, on every level, supportive of this effort, and it's actually rather impressive to have seen so many different portions of the community come together, and not just local city proper residents, but also others who see the global regional view of the importance of the city. I think that's very notable and should be recognized and should be celebrated, as everyone else and many others have said, that the implementation of said plan is the issue. And that's where the old adage, the rubber meets the road, right, really happens. In the plan, and I've read as much as I could in phases, and read the graphs, and I'd need some help, you know, too, to kind of navigate some of that stuff, every, you know, unless that's what you do all the time, you know, you have questions. And so we're going to continue to ask questions, I think, as a council, I think as a citizenry. There will be several questions that are going to be asked, and someone mentioned, or made the comment that this isn't a finished product. And that was, for me, good news to hear, because it has to be a living document, because the world we're living in is constantly evolving, changing, and since this is not going to happen overnight, things can happen that can deter, or direct, or redirect some of the efforts. What I did find, though, in this plan, is that it is what it is. It's very brick and mortar, it's very reconstructing, it's very move this to better serve that. It's a lot of green space conversations and parks, and those are all beautiful and necessary. Not a lot of people talk in it, which I think that's going to be the whole point of the implementation process, is that you can build beautiful places, but if the people are low, if people are suffering from, if the people in the place don't care, and have low, and that's not every city resident, of course, of which I am one, but there are some people who are so disenfranchised because of long years of feeling left behind, or feeling disconnected, you can build a beautiful edifice, but if the mindset of the people who are in it is low, then you're just going to actually tear up, they're going to just tear up what you build. And that's not black-white, that's not east-side, west-side, that's humanity at its, you know, most simple understanding, I think, on some levels. So I think as we're implementing, and we're doing the brick and mortar, we're doing the green space, we're doing all the beautiful enhancements that make the city look beautiful, I think the same time we have to find ways to empower those organizations that are actually touching the hearts and changing the hearts and minds of the citizens that are going to use the parks, that are going to live in the neighborhoods, that are going to utilize the businesses or start the businesses. I think we can't just build a beautiful castle and people in it have peasant mindset. And I'm not negative about Erie when I say that. I'm not being negative, I'm just saying, you know, I put it like my mom would say, you can take somebody out the hood or the trailer park, but if you don't take the trailer park or the hood out of them, they're just going to ruin wherever you send them. And so at the end of the day, we need to build people as much as we're building buildings, and we're enhancing people as much as we're enhancing parks. And if the effort is to do that, I'm all in. And whether I'm on this council, or whether I'm just living back as a general citizen, I'm all in, but it has to be a people part to this, for it to be effective and for it to be long-lasting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Witherspoon.
I want to thank Councilman Jones for reading my speech, just like I wrote it.
I snapped a picture of it when I walked by.
I'm not against the plan, but I am concerned about being inclusive, and I don't think it was totally inclusive. Even though you had a meeting at Jefferson School, it still was not in the neighborhood to include all our people. I can think of one church, Second Baptist, will fill that place, would be, you have 100 seats left, and it wasn't even considered. I'm very disappointed in that. The plan is good. The one gentleman spoke about that he lives down in Merkel Town. Well, that's downtown, that's just my point. I'm talking about above downtown. I see this, and I hope I'm wrong, as a Robin Hood theory. Robin Hood lived in the forest and wasn't allowed to come where Sheriff of Nottingham Don't want that to happen. Also, as long as I'm on council, depending on when this take place, we need to watch very closely where the jobs go, when the contractors come in, and when it hit the DS year for us to approve. If it's not done right, it may not get approved, so there are going to be some stumbling blocks. I met Mr. Bukey, very nice gentleman, very intelligent, and he knows his business, and the plan as well. Pretty good plan, but no one is talking about where the money's coming from. Someone mentioned nonprofits. Well, we may or should consider that any new nonprofits, or any building, new buildings of current nonprofit, be taxed, or do what some do, contribute to it in lieu of taxes. Every nonprofit should contribute something in lieu to it in lieu of taxes. Every nonprofit should contribute something in lieu of taxes, regardless of who you are or how large you are or how small you are. Money is gonna be the key. And if the money doesn't come in and doesn't flow, we will get Part A done, we will wait three years to get Part B done, then we gotta put money back in the rehab Part A. And then when we get down to the final one, then we gotta rehab A, B, C, and D. Those are the things we have to look at. The plan is not a bad plan. It's, it looks good. I'm like Councilman Curtis. I skimmed through it. It's a lot to read. You don't sit down and read it all at once. I love to look at graphs. I understand graphs very well. Jones, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Brennan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just want a couple, had a couple of comments from the, everyone who spoke today. I was on the committee also for the plan. I agree, it's a very good plan. We had a very good consultant, you know, Charles and CCB did a great job. Very, very good, good planning, good to work with also. But as was said here, I think it will take hard work. It'll take a lot of interpretation, a lot of discussion. And as was noted, the people of Erie need to be included, businesses, nonprofits, need all, need to all be included in the decision-making process. And as was noted also, someone noted about the incremental steps and, you know, that will be, will take, will have hopefully incremental wins as we take these small steps towards, towards our goals. And I also agree with the Planning Commission to engage an Implementation Committee and to have, have goals throughout the year, or yearly goals, and to be able to measure those goals. So, you know, I definitely look forward to continue to work with everybody to try to make the decisions, and I think we'll have a great plan to work with. Thank you.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes, I'd first like to thank all the speakers that were here today, the public, 'cause at the end of the day, while I thank all the people that are involved in the committees and all that for your hard work, it's gonna come down to the appetite of the average Erie citizen. He's gonna have to tell this council and the administration just what kind of appetite they have to make the changes necessary. And I will tell you, they are challenging. Charles Bucci only told us what I think a lot of us already knew, but it took an expert to tell us that and show us. We all could've looked up the same data on the census site. We could've looked it up ourselves, but Mr. Bucci did it for us in a way that was concise. Where do you start? That's the main dollar question. Well, you can start in the worst part, you can start in the best part, or you can start in the transitional zone, as he pointed out. Those are gonna be tough decisions. But it's important to remember that this is just a living document, much like our constitution. Today, it means one thing. Three years from now, it may mean a whole different thing. Things can change in five years or 10 years or even next year. So the document has to be constantly evolving. I noted the concern with a lot of people about transportation. That's another good reason why I think we in the city and City Council have a vested interest in our public transportation system. It's important to the city as much as it is to the suburbs. And we need to be cognizant about pedestrians. As that one gentleman pointed out, I've been to Minneapolis also and other cities, and there is kind of a balance between traffic and pedestrians. There is more of a use of, what I haven't seen here is like rent a bicycle like they have in Chicago. You don't see them in Erie, yet you see them in other major I guess I have both the pleasure and maybe not the pleasure of seeing the good and bad of this city. Due to my age, I've seen it when we had 138,000 people, and I've seen it when we dropped below 100,000. And there's many reasons. But the one thing that always stuck in my mind was, and it's lacking now, and Mr. Bucci points this out, is that the neighborhoods are very important to the health of the city. My neighborhood, which is identified as one of the so-called better ones, but at a tipping point, I look at it and I use that as an example, what happens when we in the city do not take care of little things, little problems then become big problems. While I, I love the nonprofits, including the local college that's up by my house, that same college, by their growth, has caused my neighborhood to start to turn in a way that's not very pleasant. We do not want more rentals, we want private ownership. But that's not gonna happen when you have the problems associated with young people, colleges, and when the neighborhood starts to decline. So what happened to the city didn't happen overnight. It was a slow progression. It's gonna take political courage from all of us. Some of us may lose our jobs over this, but it has to be done. Somebody has to start it. It's much like Sisyphus facing a rock that's rolling down on him. He has to dig in somewhere. There's gonna be financial challenges, and, I mean, there's gonna be some real serious challenges. Today, I was asked a question about why we didn't have fireworks in the city, or you read the newspaper and the biggest concern is who the mayor's gonna pick for the entertainment to celebrate Erie. Well, no, we need something a little more important than that. We have big issues right now. Not entertainment, not block parties. They're nice, they're important, but we need to get back into the neighborhoods. I have watched our young people leave, including my three kids. I don't like that. There's a lack of faith that I see by public employees and the general citizenry who have decided to move to other suburbs, and not because of the weather, that's for certain, but they have done it. And there seems to be a lack of faith by those who are under the public employ. They need to lead by example. There's a lack in investment, pretty obvious by businesses. When was the last time, ask yourself, that we had a major grocery store or department store move into Erie, or even one of the so-called chain restaurants? Not that I'm a fan of them. That's why I admire those private businesses that do open up. And public education's come under scrutiny, but it still manages to put out a good quality product, even though it's being challenged with very limited resources. How do I know that? I know many of the graduates when I was a school board member and as a parent. A lot of them are doing very well. I have walked the neighborhoods, and I walked it with a good friend of mine who's out in the audience, and it was an eye-opener. If you haven't seen that, you can go within two blocks again, and it'll be an eye-opener. It doesn't take long to walk anywhere, and it's an eye-opener. We don't need any more of the private pharmacies that aren't registered and stuff like that. That's out, that need, or absentee landlords who merely buy property to flip them for equity. We need to hold everybody accountable, including ourselves and everybody here at City Hall, that fails to live up to their duties or uses the excuse that we're understaffed or anything. Because, once again, when little things are not taken care of, they become big things. And finally, I will say, I learned a famous quote somebody taught me once, that when mediocrity becomes a norm, that now becomes your new standard of excellence. And that's not my city, and I'm in favor of this plan, but believe me, it's gonna take a long, long process, and it may not be the same plan you see today that'll be here in 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes.
In adopting this plan, and again, I'm not sure it hasn't already been done, are we able to put in what we pass, that there is this Implementation Committee or Strategy or Plan as a part of the adoption? Is that language able to be put in to, I mean, we can probably do whatever we want, I mean, on certain.
I would imagine.
This document was submitted by Mr. Bucci. It's his completed document for you to do as you wish to, so.
We adopt the plan, I would say, as a procedural issue, you adopt the plan, and then if you wanted to do an Implementation Committee, make that as a separate.
A separate item?
As opposed to lumping it in, because I think they're two different things. The adoption of the plan is, yes, this is the path forward.
Right.
And then the other thing is how are we gonna do it, which would be separate.
Well, I guess maybe what I was thinking, not so much even the itemized plan itself, but the contingent that in passing this, we won't just be really-nilly about it and put it in writing, connect it to the passing of this plan. You know, that's why I'm not sure if we're the best process to do that.
Right.
I guess the next question I had, because I think we've heard from several people about the implementation process, again, this is, I don't know if I get answered in this moment or not, but, or even who to ask the question to, but has, and again, this implementation was from several supporters who are on committees, et cetera. Has there been some processes already in place to, to kind of start with a certain level of priorities or certain things? Because, and this is just, this is not a slap on anything that's happened recently, it's just a question. A lot of, a previous issue around a code enforcement officer was based on our comprehensive plan that we're supposed to be passing and paid a lot of money for, and that officer was, that position is supposed to focus on certain areas. So it sounds like there's been a lot of thought around implementation already. And I'll just throw out one example of a very challenging, potentially challenging issue, is if we're talking about moving many of the social service organizations from the quote-unquote downtown region, where, where do you move them? And second of all, someone also mentioned that it's not just City Council and local government. The entire city is gonna have to buy in to what we're talking about, which is probably gonna cause for us to have to change certain rules, laws, ordinances even, because this may be about seven years ago, there was a licensed clinician, mental health clinician, who wanted to, whose family, parents passed away, they had this property in a residential area, they wanted to get some code change or zoning change for, to be able to put a clinic in a residential area. And all, excuse my French, but all heck broke loose, I won't say the other word, but all heck broke loose, like people went crazy. And this was not like Mental Health Association, respectfully, homeless. This was like rather controlled maintenance, like personal, private, you know, we're going through some stuff in our family, I need a therapist to talk to. That was shot down, and we didn't have the gumption to change anything in the zoning because of the 10 residents who came to complain about that. So I'm putting that out as an example, 'cause if we're talking about moving these extreme service providers into, deeper into the city or into residential areas, it's gonna be more than just seven city council members, the mayor, and these committees that are gonna have to buy in. And not just the poor folks that gotta buy in, it's gotta be everyone. Either that, or we're gonna be really, have to be ready to make a whole lot of people mad as hell. And that's the only, I can't even say heck on that one, because it's the reality. So I think that's a part of the conversation we have to have in a very honest way. And we can't run, we gotta hit that stuff first, I think, because we can get rolling, and then we say, okay, now we're gonna move these, and it could be derailed really, really easily. So that's why, again, this implementation, it has to be diverse in who's involved in it, and I really don't want it to just be talk. I think we need to pass something in connection to making sure we have an effective implementation plan in place. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I think that you bring up some very valid points, and I believe that we can address those points by passing a tandem resolution with the passage of the comprehensive plan, or if we choose to not pass it. Wouldn't we address that issue? We can pass a tandem resolution to support those efforts.
Mr. President.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if we pass it today as is, then...
It's not on the agenda today. This is a public hearing.
All right. I'm okay.
Mrs. Arrington, do you want to say anything? Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Wunarsky.
Just a few comments. Mr. Jones took the majority of my comments like he did for Mel. See how he is. But I just wanna thank the citizens that did come out tonight to voice their concerns and encourage their thoughts and just give us as a council, because we're, we're in this with you. We have our questions and concerns and thoughts and ideas just like you do. And although, Mr. Bucci, we have to start somewhere. You have to have a core to a plan. It just so happened, he started with downtown and branched out. I like what I see, I just, where are we gonna get the money? I love what I see. Where are we gonna get the money to fund and do this plan? But with that going forward, I know public hearing today, I believe as a council, we're gonna be setting up some other public meetings, so it can be open discussion also there. Date, location, time to be determined, but this isn't the last of public input on this plan, just so you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wunarsky. Just a few things to comment and then continue on with the meeting. This is a comprehensive plan, but it's also a community decision-making guide. And as we move forward, the decisions that we make are going to be important in the sense that the resources are limited, and we have to decide where are we going to get the best bang for our buck to build the tax base so that we can build the city that we want this city to be. We have to generate the tax revenue so that we can fund the things that the community says we value. And one of the things that, when you read the plan, it smacks you in the face. The data is clear with the number of blighted houses, with the continued disinvestment in certain neighborhoods, with the issues that go along with concentrating our social service agencies altogether in one area. These things all were decisions made in the past. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Jones. And those decisions have repercussions for today. So as we move forward with this decision-making guide, we have to remember that the data's clear, strategic investment is needed, and one of the things that was heartening to me from this was the support from the business community, the support from the citizenry. The fact that not one citizen spoke against this plan is a testament to the broad support that this plan has. As we build the city that we want this city to become, the work will be hard, but we have to always remember that Erie Refocused is from the community, for the community, and by the community to transform our community into a model city that we all want to work and live in. And with that, we will conclude the public hearing. We will now reconvene our City Council meeting with citizens to be heard. I'll allow for a couple of minutes for people to leave that we're here for the public hearing.
I don't want everybody to leave before they hear what I got to say.
We're not leaving.
I don't want you going nowhere.
Well, they were talking to us.
My name is McDonald. My property is 19th and Reed.
He has a reconvene.
Oh, okay.
Is that what you're talking about?
There's a change in the resolution.
Yeah, that's why I said a tandem would be better, because otherwise we'd have another public hearing for this.
Right.
Yeah, so let's just do it as a tandem one. That's cool.
Well, I have to get it from Kim Crane anyway. We don't even have what the resolution should say, so.
Okay.
Everybody else has to run everything before next.
Okay.
I couldn't wait. I'd have to go.
Mike said, wait a minute, don't leave.
We're still in session. We're in session officially.
Absolutely.
Talk to you, sir. Mr. McDonald, would you like to move forward, or would you like to wait a few moments, let someone else go if they wanna go? I know you want everyone to hear what you have to say.
I don't think y'all wanna hear what I got to say. I see that we don't even see that out back here, but that's okay. I still got something to say.
All right, go ahead. You have your five, your five minutes, sir.
We didn't hear what the lady on the end had to say. Y'all overlooked her. I don't like that. She's on the council, too.
She, 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 she was asked, and she's declined to make comment at that.
She, 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 she was asked, and she's declined to make comment at that.
Well, I didn't hear.
Yes, sir, I heard it. I give you my good ear.
Okay.
Okay.
Y'all talking about all of this money you're going to spend. You're cleaning the fish before you catch them. You're cleaning the fish before you come, you got to catch the fish, and then clean them. So, where are you going to get this money from? You don't even want to fund our kids' summer jobs. I, I don't understand. I want y'all to make me understand now, because I don't have up here what y'all got. Y'all been to school, I went to work. I had to work. I didn't have time to go to school. We got all of these nonprofit organizations, look at this bank building up there on 18th and State, they're putting a bunch of money in there. A bunch of money. Look like they're rebuilding it, they're putting so much money in there. What's going on? We can't get a few thousand dollars for our kids to have summer jobs. I, I wish somebody would explain it to me. I'm, I can understand, I'm not totally out of it, I got a little intelligence. Don't think I'm lost. I could tell some of you all something, but you don't want to listen, you don't want to hear what I got to say, but it'll come across your mind one day. You know that old man said so-and-so-and-so? He knew what he was talking about, and you want to believe I know what I'm talking about. Give them kids some summer jobs, get some money from somewhere, if you have to borrow it, for this, for this thing coming up. You're going to find some money from somewhere, and I don't see how you're going to get it on the tax base, because you're taxing the hell out of us as it is. We can't stand no more taxes. But you leave some in somewhere, you come up with a, oh, we're going to put a temporary tax. I don't trust temporary nothing. When you get a tax in there, you're not going to take it out. And you're, you're, I'm looking at this thing here, you're spending money like you're reaching to the air and get it. You're spending millions of dollars, anticipated. What's anticipated? How can, you don't know whether you're going to get that money or not. I'm looking at this, they got county done, forgave, somebody, they're one of them organizations, $3 million. That's taxpayers' money. Now, they, they forgiven them for that. That don't make sense to me. Somebody ought to go to jail if they can't count no better than that. You, you gave cola beer, that guy come down there with a bunch of crap, you gave them $50,000 or $60,000. Y'all just giving our money away, and it don't make sense. If you're going to give our money away, give it to the kids. I can appreciate that. Give it to the kids. They're not stealing, somebody's stealing. And you know, somebody should go to jail. Really. That meltdown, didn't nobody go to jail. I ain't seen it in the paper nowhere, where nobody went to jail. It don't make sense to me. But, hey, you let me stump my foot, you'll throw me under the jail, you're not putting me in, you're going to throw me under. Y'all better rethink this thing, because you ain't did nothing for them sinners in 20 years or more, but you're putting all that money in that building down there on 18th and State. Over there on 17th Street, you put a lot of money in that building, St. Martin's. What y'all got against our kids? And I'm not just saying the black ones, I'm talking about the poor white too. What is wrong with you people? We voted for you up there, you're letting us down.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard? Hey, Julie.
Hello. My name is Julie Minnick, 1027 West 37th Street, 16508. I will be short and sweet. As you know, I'm Assistant Executive Director of Olive Wardery, and one thing I've heard from numerous people is they want city and county council to get together in a room and negotiate the charter. So I decided, we're a transit advocacy group, I just started, decided, based on recommendations from the community, to actually do this. So I believe I've sent you all emails, and I've heard from a few of you, but I want to reiterate that Olive Wardery invites both city and county council to a work session for the EMTA charter. This is a public meeting, free and open to the public. It's on Monday, June 20th at 6:00 p.m. And I hope you all can come. I've learned a lot from doing this already, I know I've had some advisement on how to do this, and I appreciate that, but it's a learning experience just to set it up. And I hope that you will come and at least talk together and help work this out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andy Vai, I live in southwest Erie, near Liberty Plaza.
You need your address for the record, please.
1027 West 37th Street, 16508, 6th Ward, 13th District.
Thank you. That's impressive.
There's three of you who I know are involved in community service, and I wondered if any of you others are leaders in organizations, in community organizations? And if not, wouldn't that be a conflict of interest, that you are on city council but not involved in the community? There seems to be a disconnect between those who are involved in the committee, and if you're not, then those who aren't. On another note, I want to know if City Hall is a zoned residential? Because you have an elected official whose home address is listed as City Hall, City's Hall address. So there's no way to tell if this elected official even lives in the city of Erie. There's no way for the citizens to find that out. So I think actually that's a question that I should find out who to send to, so that I can get an answer to that question.
I'm in the book.
No, no, it's nobody on council. And lastly, two comments about EMTA. Is it true that there are EMTA board members about whom you are so concerned, who are continuing in expired terms? So if so, then how important really is it to you that they be on the board of EMTA? You seem not to be paying much attention to that. And lastly, I'd also like to know how a person whose livelihood depends on the car culture could be assigned as an expert in public transit? So if I could get these questions answered, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard?
Good evening. Jay Brenneman, 4118 State Street. I'm a city taxpayer, I work in the city of Erie, my wife works in the city of Erie. My soon-to-be five-year-old son will likely be attending public schools, and like all of you, I'm deeply concerned about the future of our city and our communities. I also have the honor of representing a third of the city and county government, and I ran on the platform that I wanted to make county government more responsive to the people and more to the community. And I know that each of you, you get paid less than I do, I get $4.84 an hour, I know you guys get paid like three-something an hour. And I know you have day jobs mostly, you got a lot of things going on. I do too. I mean, I could be home playing with my soon-to-be five-year-old and my two-year-old right now. I really could. For the EMTA thing, let's bear the hatchet. I, you know, I was in the Army for seven years, Iraq for two and a half. I could be a little bit, you know, I got a test of fortitude, I guess that's the term they could use, you know, I, I could be a little brash sometimes, but, you know, that doesn't have to direct where we go. We can put that aside for a second. The one thing I want to talk about, and I, I'm personally, I don't even care about board appointments. What I want to talk about is money. I've heard from several of you, several times at some of your meetings, say that the city is part of the county, and that's quite right, you know. Also that 40% of the taxes that the county receives come from the city. So, you know, by your own words, that the city's paying twice for regional services. When, we're talking about how the city can't afford for fireworks, a solicitor for city council, a planner, a code enforcement officer that has to be funded through grant money, other things that could be done, as far as bike lanes being paid for, covering over basketball courts, fixing up basketball courts, funding our community centers, putting in, buying and installing cameras on public properties for crime and blight, when it comes to strengthening the business sector on East Avenue, when it comes to all of the projects that you have been desirable of trying to do for our community, I want to help you do that. If the proposal that we have brought forth, which I'm surprised that my colleagues even wanted to do that, that my colleagues even said, let's pay for the whole thing. If that's not a sweet enough deal, I mean, if, if you still want board appointments and not have to pay for it, I'm open ears. If you really want to work something out, if you want the county to pay fire and safety protection fee for our buildings, I'm, I'm ready to hear that. I, I'm all for that, absolutely. I know that the EMTA is going to be, the city's going to be the host municipality for the next, you know, future forever, because of the 30-plus million dollars that's being dumped in here. So, you know, I, I think that we fully realize that. What I like to say is that the city isn't losing anything by a region of funding being regionalized. Because with the library system, 30-plus years ago, you had the city take over the funding, or the county take over the funding from the city and from the school district. Every year since then has saved millions of dollars for both the city and the school district, and we built the third-largest library in the state of Pennsylvania, the third-largest, 60,000 visitors this year alone. And we just put in more money in order to fix it up. 911, by your own words, in the past few years, has saved the city budget a million dollars a year. When somebody calls 911 and they live in the city, their call isn't handled any differently than anybody else. And so what I want to offer you is that, come back with a counterproposal. I mean, we know where the mayor stands on this, but we really just need five of you up there to come back, I'm going to be hanging out, and I can guarantee that, I can work with my colleagues, and we can come up with something. Let's get this done. Let's do it. I know you guys can do it, and I, and honestly, I don't need any kind of credit for anything, I honestly don't care if it's my idea or your idea. If, if honestly, it's about resources, let's make it happen. If it's about board appointments, let's make it happen. I'm all ears. But one thing I don't like is when the city says we don't have resources to do things. My kids grow up here, that's their future. I'm a city taxpayer, I don't want to see that continue to happen, when the comp plan, the future of the city, I don't want to see that happen. I want you guys to have the resources to do all the things that you ran for, and that you believe that you can do for the community, and I want to help support that. So I'll be hanging out, and anytime, again, reach out to me, I'm available, you know how to get ahold of me. I'm ready to, to listen and talk. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we'll continue on with the meeting.
Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 15954, an ordinance closing and vacating a portion of East First Street, 10,907 square feet located off the northwest section of East Avenue, with reservation of existing utility rights of way, and including all rights of way by the city of Erie. By Mr. Brennan, and seconded by Mr. Wunarski, the council file number 15954, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Wunarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15954 by yeas seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council file number 15955, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $12,500 in the city of Erie Capital Improvement Fund from anticipated and unappropriated fund balance. These funds were contributed by the Star Athletic Club for use by the Department of Public Safety for machinery and equipment. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Mersky, the council file number 15955, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Wunarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Wunarski. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15955 by yeas seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council file 15956, an ordinance appropriated the sum of $2,804,599 from anticipated and appropriated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and $29,077 program in income for a total of $2,833,676 for the 2016 projects. By Mr. Wunarski, seconded by Mr. Mersky, the council file number 15956, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Wunarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky.
Mr. Jones.
Due to, due to very clear, well-noted, documented, necessary reasons, I will be abstaining from this vote on this item.
So noted.
Mr. President, I also will be abstaining from this vote on this item.
And so will I, Mr. President.
Ms. Robyn, did you get that?
Yes, I did. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15956 by yeas four, nay zero, on first reading. Council file 15957, an ordinance appropriated the sum of $658,639 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the following home projects, or for the home M16 projects. By Mr. Wunarski, seconded by Mr. Mersky, the council file ordinance number 15957, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Wunarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15957 by yeas seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council file 15958, an ordinance appropriated the sum of $252,664 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Emergency Solutions Grant 16 Projects. By Mr. Wunarski, seconded by Mr. Mersky, the council file ordinance number 15958, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Wunarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15958 by yeas seven, nay zero, on first reading. That'll take us to new business.
Mr. President.
Jones.
I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
So moved, so we have a second.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Seconded by Mr. Winarsky.
Separations?
Any separations? Seeing none?
Moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Committee reports, Mrs. Arrington.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually being kind of quiet because I have a sore throat, but I wanted to say something. This has been a trying week for me and my family. Little over a week ago, this Saturday before last, that was one of my relatives that was shot to death on the Bayfront. Then we lost my mother-in-law last Tuesday, and then Sunday was the anniversary, my son's birthday, rather. So this has been a, a very emotional week for me. But one thing that I wanted to talk about was Friday was the, a wake of my mother-in-law. And that's the day that the three individuals got shot on Parade Street. That was a block away from where we had my mother-in-law awake at in the church. And, and it's sad, you know? We losing our loved ones over natural causes, and then we have vendalincies out here just taking lives. Nobody have respect for human lives anymore. But as a council, we are a voice for the people. We got a lot of good ideas, a lot of things that we want to do in the Erie community, but we need to get our priorities right. And one of our biggest issues right now is the violence. You can beautify this community all you want, but the violence is still here. It can't just be law enforcement. Prevention is the key. They go hand in hand. And one of the things about the community centers, they are a big part of that prevention key. Because a lot of our kids, not just young kids, but the older kids, they go to our community centers. Our community centers need help. And it's no secret that I'm disappointed, upset, however you want to call it about the CDBG monies, how I made the amendment to try to help our centers help our children. My family has been touched too many times by this violence. And for anybody to sit back and think that it cannot and it will not happen to you, they need to think twice. Because this is traveling. It don't matter where you are, it's going to come get you. So we really need to think about our priorities. We really need to do as much as we can to help our community centers, help keep these kids off the streets. I really truly believe that if our community centers could be open to eleven o'clock at night, a lot of our young people out there, they would be in the community centers. But we have to have staff. We have to have revenues to keep the doors open, to feed these kids. And that's all I was trying to do when I made the amendment. But we need to get our priorities right. Because what me and my family is going through and have going through, I don't wish that on anybody. Enough is enough. We not only need change outside in our community, we need change in here, in our administrative on how things are being done. And there is not enough being done to stop the violence. We have to do the prevention piece. The prevention and the law enforcement piece go hand in hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, um, with the public hearing we had this evening, and, you know, a very important, some very important steps are being made for the future of our community, for the future of our city, whether it's CDBG funding, or comprehensive plans, or public transportation, these are extremely important issues and concerns, all kind of come into a head at the same time. The level of violence and social issues and challenges come into a head at the same time. It's, it's a, it's almost like a perfect storm, to be perfectly honest, which for me, we can look at it one or two ways. I believe our community's at a tipping point, or at a crossroads, whatever analogy you like to use. We can either fall into the abyss of ridiculousness and just become a Detroit or some other Midwest community that becomes a ghost town, or we can see these challenges as opportunities and figure out how do we move from here and not run away from the difficult decisions. One thing that I wanted to comment on in relation to the comprehensive plan, and I didn't want to belabor the point, or the conversation is very quality, but very long public hearing this evening, in relation to, again, the, the comprehensive plan and the, the kind of subtitle of the plan, right? The Community Decision Making Guide. I think that's a very important part of the conversation. Because we have to, you know, have this balance between, again, as I said before, brick and mortar, but also people. Because someone said that the downtown is the heart of our community, and I have to disagree, the people are the heart of our community. Downtown could be beautiful and empty, or it could be, you know, it's, I, I think we have to be able to have this balance of priority. I would hope that as we're making decisions in relation to this guide, that that does not send us down a track of not seeing the importance or seeing the significance of helping to support our local nonprofits that do the most grassroots level work in our community. For example, some of the community centers, for example, again, and not just the big three, because that's, that's a, that's a, that's a word conversation that the media, I think, has really put out there, is more than, there were more than just three community centers that were in the amendment, there were other organizations that were nonprofits that were also, but never kind of made it to the, to the newspaper, to the, to the news report. But there are a lot of organizations that are out there that aren't funded or underfunded. And part of the conversation that we had during this whole debate on CDBG was that because of the decision-making guide and the comprehensive plan, it makes, it doesn't make sense, and we've been advised, to not spread limited resources. And that was part of the rationale for not supporting, or, and this is not being overly critical, this is just language that we've heard, not supporting financially some of the community centers, because that's not the best place for investment for maximum impact on limited resources. And we haven't even passed the plan yet, and we're quoting it and utilizing it to make decisions on where we're in, how we fund some of our most necessary services that are provided for some of the most challenged individuals in our community. That makes me a little bit, puts me on pause just to, to, to see if that's going to be the direction we're going to be in a lot of trouble. So I think the importance of this implementation plan is going to be very, very, very significant. And I think that, that plan and the team who are going to help to implement that plan needs to be as diverse and inclusive as possible, not just race, but that could socioeconomic involvement, levels, disability level, I mean, everything involved, I think there needs to be as diverse and broader group as possible. Also, I had a question about, because we, you know, the, it's passed by this council, that we're going to, part of that budget, we're going to have a code enforcement officer. And so, because everything now is heightened and aware, made more aware, what is the process going to be for hiring that person? And who, like, what's, what's that process going to be? Has it already started? How much involvement or question can we as council have in that decision-making process? Several people have emailed me and messaged me asking, what are the criteria? I said, I don't know, I'll find out. What's the, what's the process? I don't know, I'll find out. So I'm asking that question based on some dialogue with citizens from a diverse, from diverse parts of our community today. Again, if they're going to be focusing on the east-west Bayfront areas, I would hope that that individual, because it's all about relationship, I would hope that, and relatability, I would hope that that individual is maybe hopefully representative of some of those portions of our community, whatever that means, so that there's some relationship that can be built there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, Mr. Winarsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening once again, everyone. No committee reports this evening. There is a convention center authority meeting tomorrow that I unfortunately cannot make, but Mr. Mersky said he'd cover for me there. EMTA meeting is a week from this coming Monday. We'll naturally update you on that. The only other thing, our city summer rec program is going strong. It's, there's still time to sign up for some things, so, and I know I stress it, parents, and if your parents can't, your grandparents, please, somebody sign up, kids, for all the different things that they have to offer, basketball, golf, tennis, arts, crafts, you know, just please. Between the city and their sponsors, a lot of money is invested in this summer program, this rec program, almost three-quarter of a million dollars, I believe. Please, take advantage of it. I think there's even things for the seniors with some exercising classes, and I know they have their music on Monday nights at different senior, what are they, hotels, or what are those? Apartments, senior apartments, St. Mary's. So please, take advantage, use it, it's, it's, it's a good time, and it's great that we can still offer that. So thanks to the sponsors and naturally, the City of Erie. Thank you.
Mr. Winarsky. Mr. Kowalski.
Yes, I attended the police pension meeting this week, and their funds are being very well handled and doing well. Also attended Erie Park and Authority meeting, and they continue to work on progress on the parking plan that they were talking to council about, about modernization. So we'll hear more about that in the coming weeks and months. And their construction projects are going along very well with limited interruption to the public. Met with the Erie Development Authority, and things are progressing well there. Three more properties will be demolished, and there's some new things in, in the works to, for more housing to come and stuff. And on a sad note, I wanted to say that the Erie community lost two fine citizens this week that kind of go unnoticed. One is Mr. Ed Burnett, who is the last remaining member of the Band of Brothers, the three that were from Erie, the three that are made famous in the Stephen Ambrose book, from the Company E-506 Parachute Regiment. Ed was a good friend of mine, I didn't know him as well as the other two, but on my frequent visits to the VA hospital, he was always a man of few words, but a proud man. And the community's a little bit less for him. And just kind of surprised that, you know, we, we sometimes honor people we shouldn't, but here's a man that did a lot, and, and we're going to miss him. Also, to the family of Jimmy Issue, a man known to Little Italy, a great musician, just a nice fellow in general, very involved in that community, he'll be missed also. And I'd like to thank Amy Campatory for all of her hard work this year. Sorry to see you go, Amy. I always hate to see people that get involved in their community having to either disenfranchise themselves or move away. It makes the community a little less, little less of what it should be. And I always admire people, even if they disagree with this council, or they have constructive criticism, it's good to have people like you involved in the community, and we'll certainly miss you. And I want to thank Curtis for his comments, he hit it right on the head about comprehensive plan. Because I've always believed that good schools and good neighborhoods are really the key to the development of this city, more than anything else. When people have, have their pride, their community, their neighborhood, I think great things will happen again. And we got to, that's what we had many years ago, that we see a lack of now to some degree in some areas. So I think we need to involve the people very much in this comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended a couple of events this past month, or a couple of weeks, actually. The monthly meeting for best, the East Bayfront Neighborhood Watch on, on the sixth, a lot of neighborhood issues and initiatives were discussed. I was also asked to help with the, some of their planning efforts, they're, they have some green spaces, they're trying to, you know, do some different things, and they want to put some different pathways in, some seeding, landscaping, and some other different ideas. The, the input that the, there was a lot of input at the meeting, and a lot of it didn't probably look at further and implement into some type of planning, and of course, future fundraising to, to be able to accomplish those goals. This group, the East Bayfront Neighborhood Watch, they also want to meet with all council. They're of course also very concerned about the comprehensive plan. They agree with it, but they want to talk about how it affects their neighborhood. They would like to set a schedule, a future meeting, and we'll see what we can do to make that happen. I also attended the certificate ceremony for the Eagles Nest Leadership Corporation led by Bishop Brock, and in collaboration with UPMC Hammett. It was a great ceremony honoring the graduates of the program. There was a really interesting part of the program where they had the videos of the students, and they kind of talked about their, their past and how this program has affected their lives, you know, and it was, it was very positive and inspiring. I, I just think it's a very productive example that we see the, see the, everything, you know, see the results right away, is you're seeing these, these kids that are getting jobs and they're moving on and, and becoming a very, very grateful community to have these people as productive citizens and, and making good money and all that, and working for a good company also, the, the hospital. But I just want to thank all the contributors, there's a lot of, a lot of community leaders there and contributors to, to this group that would, that led, helping, helping out these, these students. A lot of volunteers were involved, a lot, a lot of the time involved. So again, it's a great, great event to attend, and hopefully, I know it'll continue. Thank you.
Mr. Brennan, Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to echo Councilwoman Arrington and Councilman Jones on what they just shared with us. I think I've said it once before that I lost a member of my family in Newark, New Jersey years and years ago, with a drug deal gone bad, and it wasn't a pretty sight. But nevertheless, if for one moment we think that once we beautify downtown, that crime will not appear, what's happening throughout our city is that when someone is intended to find someone and harm them or kill them, it's where they see them. So if someone's driving down State Street by the Mercantile Building, and they just happen to see them, that's where it's going to take place. That's how it happens. So we have a lot to do. The plan is just a plan, and we have to work all the minute parts of the plan. It's a big machinery. And if you don't oil it, it's not going to work for a long time. That is very, very important. We have a lot of work to do, a lot of bridges to cross, a lot of bridges to rebuild. This is our city, and if it's not a hundred percent inclusive, we have a problem. It will continue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Just a few things to report. Councilman Kowalski and I attended the Southeast Hills Neighborhood Watch meeting. One of the things that was going on in that Southeast Hills neighborhood is the deterioration of the homes on that East Thirty-Eighth Street corridor as rental units are disinvested in by the landlords up there. That's something that we need to address, and that's what the, one of the concerns that they brought to us. They also offline, I had an offline conversation with one of the residents and, about the boulevard on East Thirty-Eighth Street. We did tear down the trees. I just wanted to report to everyone that PennDOT is working on a project with the VA to reroute traffic over in that area, and until that project is done, that's, until that project's done, then the replanting of the trees will take place, because there's going to be some... gonna be some construction in that area due to that new entrance for the VA. And I wanted to thank everyone for attending the public hearing today, this evening. It's always encouraging to see so many people out that care about the community, and this is just the beginning of the process, as everyone up here has said. Public input is going to be needed, so that we have a plan that works for as many people as we have in this city, and that it works for every neighborhood, and that everyone can benefit from it. Finally, I'd like to wish Chief Tony Pol a happy retirement. He's retiring as fire chief, and we want to thank him for his service to the city and to the citizens, and we wish him well in his retirement. And we welcome Chief Santone, who will be taking over at a swearing-in ceremony tomorrow at 10:30, right here in council chambers, along with three new police officers for the City of Erie that will be sworn in. So if I stole your thunder, Ms. Beck, I apologize. And that concludes my report.
It hurts, too.
Ms. Beck administration.
Thank you, sir. That means we all get to go home about five minutes earlier. Yes, just want to send out congratulations to Fire Chief Tony Pol. I think he provided 33 years of service to the city, and we certainly thank him for that time and dedication. The Fire Department has flourished under his leadership. The ISO rating, as you know, we are rated a number one. I think there's 130 or 60, I'm gonna say, with 130 cities throughout the United States that are rated as a one. So we certainly thank Tony for all of his leadership, and wish him the very best in his retirement. And yes, tomorrow morning at 10:30, we moved the location of the swearing-in because of Guy Santone and his family that we expect to come, and the new police officers. So we needed a larger space, so thank you for letting us, allowing us to use your chambers. The Sounds of Summer had an event in Perry Square on Monday evening. The Jim City Jazz Ensemble used the pavilion, and they were thrilled with the venue. We had a great crowd, considering the weather was not that great. So the concerts are happening, and they're certainly well-attended. I'm interested to hear about the elected official with a city address. I can't imagine that we have any elected officials in this city that aren't living in the city, so I will address that at the end. But everybody, have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.
City council adjourns at 10:10. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.